Well, it is so wonderful to see so many lovely people here in the chambers with us this evening. And I'm assuming one of the reasons is we have several great proclamations on our agenda this evening. And so we will get started. In our first order of business, I'm going to call this Kalamazoo City Commission to order for the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, September 16th, 2024. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
Right.
Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Decker?
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess, supported by Commissioner Cooney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Motion passes. As with all our commission meetings, we'll be starting this meeting with an invocation. And we are blessed to have Pastor Brett Laird from the Calvary Bible Church with us here this evening. Thank you, Pastor, for being here. And the pastor will provide an invocation. And before he starts, I will ask everyone to stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, I come before you this evening, first of all, to give you glory and honor and praise. You are the Creator of all things. Lord, you are the judge of all the earth. You are the Savior of the world. And so I am here and I pray that all here would give you glory, honor, and praise. You are the one who has given us life. You are the one to whom we are accountable, and so we honor you. Lord, I want to pray for each individual here in this room, Lord, that each of them would come to know you, a Savior and Lord, that they would repent of their sins and believe the good news of your death for sin, your resurrection from the dead, your ascension to heaven, and your soon return. Lord, I want to pray for these commissioners and these elected officials, that they would fulfill their responsibility as civil servants to make decisions which are in accordance, Lord, with your higher law and what is in the best interest of our community. Lord, I pray that you would grant them wisdom from on high, wisdom that you have said in your word is first of all pure and then peaceable and reasonable and full of mercy and good fruits. So, Lord, grant them wisdom, I pray. And again, we give you glory and honor and praise, and it is in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, and created in essence, for all.
Thank you so much again, Pastor Laird. Appreciate your presence in getting us started here. Wow, this is a big night. We have a special guest with us this evening, and I couldn't be happier about that. This guest is representing a long time and very positive relationship we have had with New Mizzou, Japan. And she is here bearing gifts, and we look forward to some comments from her. But first, a co-chair of the New Mizzou Kalamazoo Committee, Eric Cunningham. And his personal guest.
So this is Cairo. Say hello, Cairo. Say hello. Please excuse my hat and please excuse me bringing a baby with me, but she had to be here a part of this moment, so I appreciate the grace. Again, being a part of an organization that's been around for 50-plus years, building relationships with our sister city in New Mizzou, Japan, has been one of the largest gifts that our community has been involved with over the years. And so, one of the individuals who has been integral with building relationships, providing cultural exchange, and just all-around family now to our community and our city, somebody who has just championed for this relationship on both in our community and in New Mizzou, Japan. I would like to introduce Ms. Sughi, if you don't mind coming on up. So Sughi is of an age where time is of the essence, and I think she understands that. Over the years, we've always sent a delegation to Japan, and on our off-years, they've sent a delegation to Kalamazoo. Well, since COVID, we've not had that opportunity. And so Sughi, understanding that it may be another two years, she said, "I'm not waiting that long, and I'm gonna come over." I also want to definitely not go, I'd be remiss without at least acknowledging Louis Hoekstra, did I say that correctly? Also, who has helped to coordinate all of these efforts. But this is a time where we can give a presentation. Exchanging gifts.
Welcome.
I'm so excited to say any words. But thank you for inviting me to Kalamazoo. I'm now ninety years old, ninety-four years, and I cannot live so long after this. So I wish to come back to Kalamazoo again, because we could not come back, come to Kalamazoo because of COVID. This is the year we come, our dedication was going to come to here, was coming here, so it was canceled. So, Lord, to me, if you could come by yourself, try. So I was so glad to be back here. I'm so happy to participate here. That's all. My English is gone.
It's amazing. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We are honored by your presence. We really appreciate you've made the journey all the way here, but you have not come empty-handed, I don't think. And so I'm going to come down your way as well.
I have made, yeah, I have made twenty-seven dolls in my life, and I had a exhibition, very small exhibition at my city, and seven hundred more than, seven hundred people come together to observe my dolls. And I wish to present one of them. I hope you will appreciate my dear doll. Thank you so much.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you have brought?
Most of the dolls I made are characters from Kabuki. You know Kabuki drama, but this is one of the Kabuki. Probably this has a story, but I don't know exact stories. And another one is Japanese badminton. Yeah. Of course, this is a character, this character is from Kabuki.
Thank you. We have something for you here. So I'll ask you to open it up. I hope you don't need a scissors. See if we can get this here. I know that the youngest one up here will probably just want to play with the wrapping paper. That's always what happens at Christmas, right? This has been packed like it had to travel from Japan. Are we gonna be able to open this? Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
So this is a painting by Gay Walker, people may know, here in Kalamazoo. And we, as little as it is, locally made, and we're hoping that you are able to safely take this back to New Mizzou with you. Yes.
Goldish. My name is Gold, Big Gold. My name is Big Gold. Thank you so much.
Want to take pictures? Yeah, please.
Hi, I'd like to just add one little comment, okay, a personal comment. She mentioned that she gave a doll show in New Mizzou in April, and that seven hundred people came to see her dolls there, which was beautiful. But at the very end of all of her exhibit, she had placed the key to the city of Kalamazoo, which she had been given several years earlier, and she had a picture of Mayor Morrison, who started the Kalamazoo-New Mizzou back-and-forth thing back in 1963. So that picture of him and his wife was there in her display for the seven hundred people to see. I thought that was pretty special.
And the key to the city of Kalamazoo as well.
The key to the city of Kalamazoo.
The first guest from Kalamazoo is Caroline Hamm, the mayor of Kalamazoo. She stayed with me, and we had a very good time together.
Do you want to tell about the shoes? Tell about, oh, no. I'll tell it. She says that when Caroline Hamm came, she was instructed that you don't wear your shoes in the house. So when Mayor Caroline Hamm arrived at Sughi's door, she took her shoes off and then walked to the house, barefooted, to go in the house, and Sughi said, "Oh, no, you don't have to take your shoes off when you get out of the car. You do it when you get to the house." So that was just a little tidbit about our Mayor Caroline Hamm, a sweetheart.
After that, I explained, this is your room, do as you like. She, a few minutes later, I came back, her room. She displayed about ten pairs of shoes, displayed very important place of the room. The place is called Tokonoma. Tokonoma is the most important place of Japanese house.
Let's take a couple pictures, Jean. Want a picture?
Here. Sughi-san, shashin.
Thank you.
This box is coming apart.
You have to hold it from the bottom.
Can you grab it by the bottom?
Yes.
Thank you. A wonderful, long-term relationship. We should all be so blessed. We do have four proclamations in front of us this evening. The first, I don't necessarily have everybody's names, but I know there are folks here for each one of these proclamations. The first one is the Diaper Need Awareness Week, and that is going to be read by Commissioner Hoffman.
Good evening, Sarah. We're so glad that you all are here. Diaper Need Awareness Week, September 23rd through 29th, 2024. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not being able to afford a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can impact the health and well-being of children and their families. And whereas, national surveys and research studies report that nearly half of all families struggle with diaper need, and forty-eight percent of families delay changing a diaper to extend the available supply. And whereas, a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs that enable children to thrive, and caregivers to work. And whereas, many caregivers struggling with diaper need report missing an average of five days of work each month due to insufficient supply of diapers. And whereas, without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention, resulting in medical costs, and caregivers may be prevented from accessing childcare needed to go to work or school, thereby destabilizing the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas, the people of Kalamazoo recognize that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the city's families and communities, and improved health for children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas, through their important work of addressing diaper need, diaper banks play a critical role in supporting families, improving infant health and well-being, and advancing our local economic growth. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, I, Stephanie Hoffman, on behalf of David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby proclaim September 23rd through the 29th, 2024, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Kalamazoo, and encourage all citizens of Kalamazoo to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and support those organizations that collect and distribute diapers to families struggling with diaper need, so that all of Kalamazoo's children and families can thrive and reach their full potential. Signed by David F. Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. My name is Sarah Kessler. I'm here on behalf of Care Collective of Southwest Michigan. We are a diaper and period supply bank that supports young people birth through young adulthood. And as Commissioner Hoffman read, we know that half of families with young children in Kalamazoo are experiencing diaper need. The good news is that Kalamazoo is a city that consistently shows that they care about babies, families, infant health, and there are numerous programs that support families with young children. The other piece of good news is that families can thrive when they have consistent access to diapers. When they have enough diapers, parents can change diapers as often as needed, which we know prevents those health problems and also increases caregivers' confidence in their own competence as caregivers and reduces overall household stress. Also, when a family has sufficient access to diapers, they can enroll children in high-quality childcare and early education programs, and then they themselves can attend work or school or both. We know that providing diapers to families supports everyone in the household, not just the actual babies wearing the diapers. The other piece of good news is there's lots of ways to get involved and support families. Care Collective has volunteer programs weekly, and if you're interested in learning more about how to get involved, the best way is to follow us on social media, sign up for one of our volunteer events. So far this year, we've distributed around 300,000 diapers and are on track to do about half a million this year, our first full year of operation. And there's still lots more work to be done. So thank you for helping us spread the word about diaper need, but also spread the word about the good news of what families can do when they have the diapers they need and how we can all get involved to support these families. Thank you.
Next up, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Commissioner Pradel.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We're very excited tonight to have a crew from Big Brothers, Big Sisters here tonight to recognize Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month here in this month of September. This is something that's particularly important to our community because mentorship is important to us. But you'll notice that a number of organizations and individuals in our community will be wearing green. City Hall will be lit in green this week as well, and it's really for one purpose, and one purpose only, to remind the community that we have a desperate need for mentors in this community, and especially through a good organization like Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Before I read this, I just want to make sure to share this. My family, and as an individual, I've mentored two individuals through Big Brothers, Big Sisters. First individual I had a chance to for four years when I was in college. He's now a grown man, working in Florida. When I used to go down for trips for work for Florida, we'd still stay in touch with each other and get together. And the second kiddo was another pre-teen that we mentored as a big family, and it was amazing how well that integrated with our family. I just want to share one quick story about that experience. We took him to the farmer's market one weekend and realized at age ten or eleven, it was the first time he had ever had a blueberry. And those are the opportunities that you can ignite in a young person over and over and over again, and the curiosity of exploring the world and seeing the world. So, thank you for being here. I'll go ahead and read this. So whereas the health and educational well-being of children is the responsibility of all citizens, and whereas by strengthening our children through mentoring, we're building a stronger future for them, our communities, and our state, and whereas the efforts of one citizen mentoring through Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Southwest Michigan will help ensure that a child realizes their own personal value and potential and instill within them the hope for a bright future. And whereas relationships with caring Big Brothers, Big Sisters offer youth valuable encouragement, motivations, and support to guide them in making positive choices. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters success indicators show that youth with a big brother or a big sister in their lives are more likely to have a successful future and become good citizens. And whereas in connection with the national mentoring effort, our local Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Southwest Michigan is challenging residents in Kalamazoo, Michigan to step forward to volunteer and become a mentor. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, I, Commissioner Chris Pradel, on behalf of Mayor David Anderson of the City of Kalamazoo, hereby proclaim the month of September, 2024, as National Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month in the City of Kalamazoo, and urge citizens to use their time to better understand and recognize the need to help guide a local child to reach his or her full potential. Furthermore, I congratulate Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Southwest Michigan for their continued success of helping meet the mentoring needs of children in our community. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Pradel and the rest of the Kalamazoo City Commission. We really are grateful for this proclamation. You know, I think it's always important for all of us to think about how we got to where we are today and the mentors that played those significant roles in our lives, right? And mentors can show up in a lot of different ways at a lot of different times in your lifetime. But at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we really know the impact that a mentor can have on youth that they're serving. And we often hear that the volunteer gets as much out of it as the child does. I believe it's a fantastic experience. We have tremendous staff, board, and volunteers in the community. I would like to add, though, we do have over 100 children right now on our waiting list, waiting to be matched with a mentor. So that's 100 kids right now out there waiting to see when their big brother or big sister, big family, big duo, will come to spend time with them. So I encourage you to think about mentoring. To learn more, you can visit our website at thinkbigtoday.org. And as Commissioner Pradel said, wear green. Green is our accent color, and we are painting the town green. There's a number of parkers who will be advertising in their social media with green. There's gonna be a bunch of really tasty green food items, and just a lot of lights and ribbons around the city. So really encourage you to wear green, to really expand the visibility for mentoring, and thank you very much for the proclamation.
Well, our third proclamation is recognizing one of the most effective nonprofit organizations here in Kalamazoo. I say that without prejudice, but I have an opportunity to engage with the Director of Community Homeworks as we discuss needs in Kalamazoo and all the great work that Community Homeworks is doing. I believe Vice Mayor Hess is going to be reading the proclamation.
I am, and it's not because I get to sit next to Commissioner Pradel on a regular basis that I too am involved in the work of Community Homeworks. From its humble beginnings to now, they've made a tremendous difference in the lives of so many people in Kalamazoo, which we'll hear in a minute. But I want to welcome Kalen Humes to accept, as well as Zach Honkins, and Tiana Harrison, who also serves on our Kalamazoo, the president of our Kalamazoo Public School Board.
So, welcome, and here's a proclamation for Community Homeworks 15th Anniversary from 2009 to 2024. Whereas, since its founding in 2009, Community Homeworks has been a legal, leading local voice in homeowner retention, offering programs and services to help keep families in their home. And whereas, in 2024, the organization celebrates its 15th anniversary of providing no-cost, health-and-safety home repairs and empowering homeowner maintenance education programming. And whereas, Community Homeworks will launch its third core program in fall of 2024, a tool library, which will provide access to tools and supplies for Kalamazoo County residents. And whereas, the organization believes in the power of systems change and sees homeowner retention as a critical component to addressing the housing crisis and creating intergenerational wealth. There are thousands of income-eligible homeowners and families in Kalamazoo County who own a home and want to retain, remain there, but are one catastrophic repair away from losing it all. And whereas, one of the most effective ways to improve the vital housing stock in our community is to keep those in their homes who already have one. And whereas, the organization recently expanded to serve homeowners throughout Kalamazoo County, significantly increasing its service-delivery footprint and served a record 233 households in 2023. And whereas, the organization serves homeowners in Kalamazoo County who are under 80% of the area median income. In addition to saving homeowners from significant unexpected repair expenses, the organization invests in homes to help avoid predatory debt, create wealth in one of the most valuable assets, and often save on utility expenses. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor, I Vice Mayor Gene Hess do honor the 15th Anniversary of Community Homeworks and invite residents to celebrate this special milestone year and the organization's contributions to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of Community Homeworks and my team members, I just want to say thank you so much to many of you sitting up on the podium today and to many of you in the audience. I see a lot of familiar faces, but without your advocacy, without your support, there is no way that we would be able to serve the thousands of families that we've been able to support during this 15-year journey. So, we are so excited for continued partnership, and we look forward to another 15 years of serving Kalamazoo. So, thank you so much.
One more proclamation this evening. That proclamation will be read by Commissioner Cooney. It's Celebrate Bisexuality Day. Commissioner Cooney.
Whereas, the City of Kalamazoo proudly acknowledges the rich diversity of its residents and steadfastly commits to fostering an inclusive, equitable, and community of belonging where all individuals are valued and respected. And whereas bisexual individuals have played a pivotal role in shaping the social, cultural, and economic landscape of Kalamazoo, yet often face unique challenges and misunderstandings related to their sexual identity. And whereas, the Bisexual Resource Center founded in 1985 has been championing bisexual visibility, providing essential support and resources, and fostering a sense of community and belonging for bisexual individuals, both locally and around the world. And whereas, Celebrate Bisexuality Day, observed annually on September 23rd, serves as a vital opportunity to acknowledge and honor the lived experiences, enduring contributions, and resilience of bisexual people, as well as raise awareness about the issues they face. And whereas, the City of Kalamazoo reaffirms its dedication to ensuring that bisexual individuals are not only recognized and respected, but also fully supported in all aspects of life, including healthcare, education, employment, and community well-being. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David Anderson, Mayor of the City, we do hereby proclaim September 23rd, 2024, as Celebrate Bisexuality Day in Kalamazoo. I urge all residents to join in honoring the invaluable contributions of our bisexual community, to stand against bi-fobia and bi-erasure, and to promote a deeper understanding and acceptance of bisexuality in all its forms.
I want to thank the City Commission, the City of Kalamazoo, and those who are present today. The Bisexual Resource Center, the BRC, is the leading national organization for bisexual plus community, and we've had a presence in Kalamazoo since 2017. What I really appreciate the most is that the City of Kalamazoo is dedicated and has continued to show their dedication to highlighting and showing the importance of inclusivity and understanding to the broader LGBTQIA2S+ community. And we celebrate, the Celebrate Bisexuality Day celebrated worldwide on September 23rd to recognize bisexual individuals. So those who are maybe not familiar and want to know more, you can check out the Bisexual Resource Center to learn more about what we do and who we are, or check out Outfront Kalamazoo. They're not able to be here with us today, but they also support our efforts. And thank you.
Wow, quite a series of recognitions there. And really, that is just the barest, barest tip of the iceberg. One of the things I think that we all get to benefit from when we sit up here, and I certainly do in this seat, is over and over again becoming aware of all the volunteers and organizations in Kalamazoo, working to help each other and this place be a better place. So, thank you, everyone in Kalamazoo that volunteers in any organization that is attempting to make Kalamazoo a better place. Appreciate that. Now we're down to adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioners, are there any items on the Consent Agenda G that you would like to have moved to the Regular Agenda H? All right, see none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to move an item from Consent Agenda G to Regular Agenda H? Okay, so let's slowly walk through that. So you're asking for Item 1? Item 3? Item 5? Item 7? I'm sorry, did you mention last one?
7 through 12.
And 7 through 12. Anyone else that would like to move any items from the Consent Agenda? All right, thank you. See none communications, City Manager.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now is the opportunity for public comments for our City Commission Business Meeting. Just a reminder, you will have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. And this is also not an opportunity for dialogue, but a time for you to take advantage of this time to express your opinions on any topic.
Good evening, everybody. Two things. I just want to say thank you so much for the Diaper Care Needs proclamation in particular. And I want to make sure that all of you and everybody watching knows that there's also a diaper bank at St. Luke's Episcopal Church, right behind City Hall on Level Street. And that diaper bank also gives out so many thousands of diapers a week. It's just amazing. Everybody should know that WIC and SNAP benefits do not include diapers. So it's a really serious need. So, the Care Collective and St. Luke's Diaper Bank are both very important. The second thing is about the solar decision that you have to make tonight. I was very encouraged to read about solar gardens, solar farms in other places that have made them high enough that agriculture can happen underneath. And in fact, in places where there's a lot of dry or very hot weather, the shade has made agriculture better than it was previously. So I'm hoping that you will ask consumers to make the solar farms workable for agriculture on the same sites, similarly to how windmills can, don't prohibit agriculture on the land. And in other cities, the solar panels have been raised high on parking lots, large parking lots, like at malls, any large business, so that they provide shade for all the parked cars, which is very valuable in the summer, and then catch the snow from falling on all the cars in the winter. I'm raising this because we've got such valuable agricultural land in Michigan. We produce the second-highest variety of produce crops in the country after California. Michigan's produce is amazing, and I want us to continue to value our agricultural land and not turn it into only solar gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi there, Austin Schinell, Porridge resident, 49024. Thank you to the committee and all those in attendance. I'm the kitchen manager at the VFW 1527, Joseph B. Westnatch Post. We're actually celebrating our 95th year of operation. And for those who may not know, that Westnatch Street was renamed from West Street in 1920 after his military excellence in service. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind folks that we are a volunteer organization, and we are in desperate need of continual volunteers. Duties would be kitchen prep, cooking, cleanup, historical research, property management. This is a unique opportunity at a private veterans' club, which is fully open to any and all who wish to participate, including those individuals who require to fulfill volunteer duties, refugees, and all fellow humans alike. Any VFW volunteers are eligible for a hot homemade meal and a cold beverage of their choice at the end of their shift. All the membership is contingent on honorable DD 2-on-4. The mandate for public meals also stipulates that any veterans in need of a meal are always served complimentary. So if you know someone hungry who's a vet in the area, please send them by to see us. Our Taco Tuesdays run 5:30 to 7:30 on Tuesday PM, and family-style Thursday meals for American Legion and Marine Corps League are 5:30 to 7:30. The VFW has also partnered with an upcoming festival. It is called the Canadianna Festival, and we're running that at Arcadia Creek next Saturday. The festival is also in desperate need of volunteers, especially for setup. On Friday night, September 20th, Amy Campbell is your contact, and you can reach her at CanadiannaFest.fun. The event runs Saturday, September 1st from 1:00 to 11:00 PM at Arcadia Creek site, featuring junior recipient Crystal Swanda and local Kalamazoo hit rock band Rock RX, performing chart-topping Canadian hits. The famous Rick Green Order, the recipient of Canada, from the Red Green Show will be present. That's a new alert we just got in the last two weeks. And the Cooks and Chefs Association, the ACF of Kalamazoo Battle Creek, is our 501 partner for the community event. Veterans receive discounted tickets, and children are free. We hope to see you there to support our international partnerships, not just currently, but also in the historic battles that have ensured the freedom that we enjoy today. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you all again on this Monday afternoon. So I just want to say that I went to the City Open House, September 12th on Thursday. And I was, I really got a lot of information about the CDBG money and the whole money and those funds. And so I was really disappointed by the barriers that exist with that money. I know that's federal money, right? But the, you know, hoops that developers or people who want to access somebody have to go through. And it's just presented in a way that seems like it could do something, right? Like, oh, this is to build house, affordable housing and all this. And we see that, like, usually the minimum amount of units are afforded for affordable housing. And so, yeah, the facilitator said that there was nothing systemic that was going to, that that was going to fix, right? That was just basically for the different categories, you know? It was a wide range of categories, actually, like from housing to improving, like, neighborhoods. And so, I just, I just want to speak on a more, like, wide level about that. Like, there's really no systemic programs happening in Kalamazoo. And I think that the hotel approval, you know, that money, the ARPA money that's going to go into, I think that would be a great pilot program. I think that we could really see examples like Houston. Houston had a successful rapid rehousing program. There's a lot of examples. I know some of you are aware. And I really do encourage you all to look at the reports, like, the reports from the, they're called, okay, the CDBG and home reports, the core planning reports, all that. I read all those reports, and they were pretty grim, if you ask me. I mean, who's affected by flooding? Who's affected by unstable housing? It's like, what does the community want? Number one thing is housing, right? And we never see that actually come to fruition. Actually, affordable housing for 0% to 30% is completely inattainable, right? And when we talk about being homeless, we, like, people that are 60%, 80%, they're not like, they're not safe from this economy, from the expense, how expensive housing is, right? So that, that creates a mudslide for people who, I mean, literally a mudslide. I mean, they're getting hit with trauma, they're getting hit with, they just lost their job, they're at the hospital, they're this. And the last thing they need to worry about is housing, and they get evicted, right? And there's no services in Kalamazoo that's going to say, we're going to house you, and then we're going to help you find stable housing, right? For people who are living in their cars, for people who are living couch surfing, right? There's no, no program, no safety net at the bottom. So we need to create a safety net, whether it's 0% to 30%. If that AMI had a safety net, everybody else would have a safety net. That's where we should be starting, right? So I encourage you all to dig deeper, especially in this political climate where we're separated with left or right. We got to start, like, seeing who's really on the right side and who's on the wrong side.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. It's about to be winter time. There are no pods, there are no housing. There are so many people out on the streets. There are so many babies out on the streets. There are so many kids out on the street. there are so many babies out on the streets, there are so many kids out on the street. What are we going to do to make sure that they're not out in the cold? They're not going to freeze to death. They're not going to die because they're outside, because they have nowhere to go. Winter is coming up. It's September. What are we going to do? Are we going to do something this winter? Or are we just going to sit back and just be like, okay, there's organizations out here doing the work? We shouldn't be out here doing the work alone. Y'all should be out here with us, side by side, providing things that we need for them. And it's only September. Our babies are out on the street right after school. It's going to be cold. Then what? They can't be in the mission all day. They have to be out on the street. How fair is that to our children when they get out of school? They're supposed to be doing homework. They're supposed to be safe, but they're not. They're out on the street. There's no housing, there's no programs that are set up to make sure that they're not out on the street. We need to see y'all out here side by side with us to see what's really going on, to help. Nobody should be having children or newborns out on the street. It's sad. Kalamazoo is too wealthy to be able to not care or not do something. There's programs, but are these programs really helping? Are they helping to maintain? Are they helping them and showing them what to do? Mental health, there's so many layers to this. We need y'all help. We are starting to burn out, but guess what? We still show up and do what we're supposed to. Many of us are going through things ourselves, but guess what? We show up because they need us. We know without us, things aren't going to happen. We know you, you guys aren't going to show up like we do. You guys should be showing up multiple times a week to see what's going on, to see what's really going on. Nobody with, who just had a baby, nobody that's sick, nobody with kids, they should not be out here on these streets. They should be housed. Kalamazoo has money to help house and make sure their mental health needs are met. Food, food, clothing, anything that they need should be met through the city, through the county, through the state, not through these organizations, not through independent people. I'm a single mother, but guess what? I still take my money and come out here and make sure that they have. I'm struggling myself. But you know what? At the end of the day, it's not about me, it's about what's best for those that are out here that are unhoused. Those are the most important people out here. Unhoused children, unhoused babies, unhoused veterans, unhoused seniors, unhoused mothers, unhoused families. I need y'all to do something. This is tearing everybody apart, knowing that we have to see this on a day-to-day basis. Do better by your citizens of Kalamazoo.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Seema. I live on Lake Street. I live in the low-lying area of Kalamazoo. I live in the known floodplain area, south side of town, south town neighborhood. I live next to our last natural green space, Lake to Stockbridge. Our natural green space has a natural watershed, wetlands, and wildlife, big and small. We even have a baby screech out. Caught him on my camera, but I don't have a picture of him. This little green space has abundance of trees. Some are 24 inches around. They help purify the air. We have a pollution problem in Kalamazoo. What problem don't we have in Kalamazoo? The air we breathe needs to be better. It also helps with climate change, provides shade, trees, drink a lot of water, which is good. I live in a known floodplain area. I have flooded three times this year already. The city of Kalamazoo storm drains floods out the streets all over my neighborhood, standing water in the streets after four inches of rain. Everybody should be able to enjoy the rain. Four inches, we're flooded. Four inches in a day. Then when the streets flood out, the storm drains back up the sewers in the streets. I see you can fix issues only in chosen areas, is where you steer the money all the time. I have been asking you to fix this problem now for seven years, and no homeowner should have to deal with backup from the city sewers. When it backs up in the streets, it also backs up in the groundwater, which our subpumps pump out. It's the same water that you use for drinking water in Kalamazoo. This problem needs to be fixed. It's been going on long enough, seven years. Bikes, bikes don't follow the rules of the road. I watch them every day. I watch four bikers every day. I'm going to tell you the street. Ride down Winchell, they go straight through the stop sign on Broadway. Then they get down to the street light, they don't stop at it. And then you wonder why people get hit. You blame the cars for it. Bikes need to follow the rules, too. You've got traffic so backed up all over Kalamazoo that people don't want to set it five lights. They don't want to set it every single light. How much pollution is going up in the air from those cars setting idle over and over for each individual light? Rent, rent is too high in Kalamazoo. I work two jobs. That's why I don't move out of my house, because I can't afford to move anywhere else. $1,200 to $1,400 for a studio apartment to live in Kalamazoo when crime is so high? What, four people got stabbed downtown? Two people got shot on West Nigent Maple, West Nigent Florence? Two other people just got shot? This is ridiculous. It's not safe anywhere you go in Kalamazoo, and something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Barbara Fields. I'm a resident. I live at 302 West North Street in the new apartments NACD has built, and I'm concerned part and north till part and front is pitch black. There's no lights out there, and I've been in the new place three years. Come on, y'all, it's all seniors up there. Y'all got to give us some kind of protection. All seniors live up there, and I don't think that's right. There's no lights there, and I've been there three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie. I'm a Northside resident. I am here tonight speaking on behalf of some ongoing long-term issues that we have been experiencing in the area, starting first and foremost with what you all have designated to be the mobile nuisance party that has plagued the eight-a-quarter for over 20 years. The clock is not working.
No, it isn't. There we go.
Okay. The mobile nuisance party has plagued that area for over 20 years. The processes that you all have developed, either within the city commission or in collaboration with the Kalamazoo Public Safety Department, have been non-effective. The data clearly shows that those individuals who bombard the area are not Northside residents. It is time for an effective plan and the support from the city of Kalamazoo and the police department to put this to an end. The number of homicides that have resulted from this is ridiculous. The number of phone calls that you all have received through KDPS from the residents is endless. There's no reason why every weekend residents should be kept up from the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00, 8:00 AM the following day for three to four consecutive days in a row. There is a property location, which is the Row Homes on Lawrence. They are in the possession of the city of Kalamazoo, the majority of those. They are blight. They are an eyesore. They are a plague to our community. We don't want to hear any more table talk about what you're going to do to fix those issues. It is time for a true plan of action to address those units and do something about it. They take an entire city block. The boarded-up locations, the trash all over the place, no one should have to get up on a weekend morning and fill bags of trash up because there are unwanted people on your block. It is not something that we can control. You may wake up and there's over 500 people on a block. The lights continuously flashing inside of your homes, and the sirens going off from the police are not working. We don't need police to show up in an area and flashlights and stand there and observe. When your calls are coming in, what we are asking for is for you to get the people out of the area and not for it to return 20 minutes later. Something has to be done. It is affecting the quality of life for residents who pay taxes in the city of Kalamazoo like in other neighborhoods. This is absolutely appalling and ridiculous. Residents have been working diligently for the last five years to address some concerns within their homes on their own. But when you can look outside your door and you can see property owned by the city, the land bank or Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services, which is boarded up and not habitable, it does not provide a good sense of security in your neighborhood. It doesn't keep you motivated. You all have the ability to address these issues. Please do your job that you have been elected for and do something about this immediately. We will continue to come back to these meetings to address this.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Carrie, and I'm also a Northside resident. I live on Florence Street, and the shooting that happened over the weekend was actually right close to my house. Thankfully, it didn't come to my house, but I'm also addressing the public nuisance parties that are going on every single weekend. I live right there, and people are just lined up on the street. Cars are lined up on the street as their, as a parking lot, and I can't sleep. I already lose sleep anyways because of some emotional things, but this is not helpful. I have people coming into my property and urinating and vomiting in my yard in the middle of the night while I'm trying to sleep, so therefore I'm not able to catch them. When I do catch them, they try to fight me. When I ask them to leave my property, they do not, they try to fight me. I call the police, the police come, and they don't even come to my address. But I'm also asking for you guys to please do something about it. The police need to be more forceful with these people about leaving an area that they're not invited to. I did not invite these people on my property, and here they are, in my, in my yard, in my driveway, and my dogs can't even go outside and use the bathroom because they're so upset about all these people surrounding their home. I need it to stop. Please, please help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Robert Cole. I'm a resident of the Northside area as well. I have been there since 1990. We bought our house, we've been through every problem that has been there. It has gotten considerably worse over these past few years. I recently went on camera with News over the X-Train, whatever you want to call it. The city has tried to do something, but they have not done enough. It is time to stop. We are tired of our young men being killed in our streets by people that are not from our area. Some of them are, most of them are, and it's time to do something. We have a row of homes that the city owns, and we get letters in the mail about being fined if we have something in our yard, when that stuff is there every day. I don't care what day you come down there. We clean it up, the next day it's right back there. The city doesn't send anybody down, so who's going to hold the city accountable? If we've been accountable, held accountable for something, getting threatening letters, the city should be. We pay taxes, we need the city to do better. Not one person on this board lives on the Northside, to my knowledge. If you did, you would not allow this to go on. Come down there, see what's going on, spend a couple of days, and see what happens. Guarantee you'll go back and feel the same way that we feel. It's not a good feeling. And if we try to help people in our community, we can't get help from the city. Somebody's got to do something. Stop turning your backs to what's going on, a blind eye. We see the police throughout the morning, they ride through. Hardly ever do you see them at night. I have cameras. I watch them all the time because I like to see. And just like my wife says, why don't we ever see them at night? You might see one every hour. Ride through and never stop, never go slow, just riding through. So we're expecting the city to step up and help us.
Thank you. Next, please.
Right here. Good evening, gentlemen. Honor to all that is here. We live on the north side of Lawrence and Florence Street. My parents have been there since '73, and I moved back there in 2003 or '04 to surround her and be closer to her because she was older and sicker, and the neighborhood was a shambles. And it's still a shambles. We have had residents being shot. We've had residents, we had people being killed over there, bullet holes in our cars. We got all these things going on. Aside all that, we have a land bank in the city of Kalamazoo with 85% abandoned housing in the neighborhood. And the city of Kalamazoo, as wealthy as it is, is doing nothing but talking and blowing smoke. And me, I raised my children there. I raised children, six children in this neighborhood. All six of them graduated from high school. Four of them graduated from college. I've done my part. What is the city going to do? And when will the city do it? It has promised these things for the decades now that I've been over there, and this is just terrible to say that we have life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness, and I'm paying taxes, my mama's paying taxes. And all the way back to the history, we've done what we're supposed to do. But the city of Kalamazoo and the land bank, who I believe owns this property, have done zero for this community. Surely there's partying and all these things going on, but they are just a symptom of the problem. The problem is economically and financial stability in that neighborhood. I paid my taxes, I paid my dues, I did what I was supposed to do. I expect this city to answer to us on the Northside, to answer to us on Florence and Lawrence Street, because all the surrounding areas are getting developed and redeveloped, and there seem to be cash there. But when it comes to us, it seemed to be waiting for us to die or waiting for us to get so indebted with taxes that you come take the property for free. And this is a shame for this city to exist like this, and I am fed up from the head up.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is James Pitts. I'm also a resident of the Northside. I've lived on Florence Street for 18 years now, and I've also noticed, you know, that the city hasn't done much when it comes to the nuisance parties. They haven't done much when it comes to the row houses that's there, that's a blighted sight, and we're not looking for that to be remodeled, but more torn down and rebuilt. When it comes to the violence and the police presence over there at night, there's next to none, you know? And the residents of this, of this neighborhood have fought hard to try to keep it clean, try to keep it together, but we can only do so much. You know, there's been times when there's been shootings, bullets have come through my home, you know? I also raised my kids there. I thank God that, you know, either my kids or no one, because no residents of our neighborhood has been killed while they're sitting in their homes, and everybody else from out the city is partying and doing whatever. But even for myself, in May of 2022, was a victim of gun violence in front of my house on Lawrence Street, you know? I was almost a casualty of that. So, you know, I know firsthand, and I know that I expect, and I would hope that you guys would take it just as serious as if it was in front of your houses, that we could actually make something happen to where we don't have to go summer by summer, year by year, not being able to sleep, not being able to, you know, come outside at night to confront people, you know, that's just standing in front of their, in front of your homes, doing whatever they want to do as if they own it. And we're asking that the city support the police department to actually do something about what it is that we're asking for, which is really just to clean up, help clean up our our neighborhood as hard as we're fighting to keep it clean and keep it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, city resident, rank my vote volunteer and candidate for Kalamazoo Public Library District Board of Trustees on the November fifth ballot. When I last spoke, I announced Rank My Vote's Forty Town Halls in Forty Days statewide presentation series about ranked choice voting. Our Kalamazoo Town Hall was coming up soon. The next morning, I learned that our whole series had moved to about two weeks later. So our Kalamazoo Town Hall about ranked choice voting will now be held next month on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from one thirty to three thirty PM in the Van Duzen Room on the third floor of Kalamazoo Public Library Central Branch in downtown Kalamazoo, just two doors east of where I'm speaking now in City Hall. With the date change, our first West Michigan Town Hall about ranked choice voting will now be the one in Portage, still scheduled for Thursday, September twenty-sixth, from six to seven thirty PM at the Unitarian Universalist Community Church on Shaver Road. Our St. Joe Town Hall has been canceled. It's been replaced with one in Battle Creek on Tuesday, October one, from six thirty, from five thirty to seven PM at the Willard Library on Van Buren Street. These three Town Halls about ranked choice voting are among the thirty-six we're holding in cities across Michigan, beginning with Livonia on Sunday, September twenty-second and ending with Brighton on Saturday, November second. RSVP for these Town Halls and see the full schedule on our website at rankmyvote.org/events, where my is "am I," the postal abbreviation for Michigan. Again, that's rankmyvote.org/events. Please attend, please attend our Town Halls in Portage, Battle Creek, Kalamazoo and other Michigan cities to learn about the problems with the current plurality voting system and how ranked choice voting can solve these problems. This Town Hall series is the public kickoff for our statewide petition drive and ballot campaign to amend the Michigan Constitution for ranked choice voting on the November twenty-twenty-six ballot concurrent with the next gubernatorial election. Next spring, we plan to begin collecting seven hundred thousand petition signatures statewide and we'll have only six months to do it. So if you're interested in helping us with that massive effort, also please attend our Town Halls and/or sign up to volunteer on our website at rankmyvote.org/volunteer. Again, that's rankmyvote.org/volunteer. Finally, a shout out to former Kalamazoo County Commissioner David Buskirk. As a candidate for Kalamazoo Public Library District Board of Trustees, I have a small team that's working, I'm working with to promote my candidacy. I've already handed out a few thousand of my campaign flyers. One of our volunteers stopped by David's house today and David said he knew who I was. I'm guessing that comes from my years of addressing the city commission as I'm doing today. Thank you. I'm going to give, copy my remarks to the clerk and I've got seven of these for the city commissioners, including the one who's absent. Thank you. Rank my vote.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Zachary Lassiter. I live in the city of Kalamazoo and the city attorney and I can fight about that if he doesn't agree with me, which we've already done a couple of times. I used to live on the Northside, I don't currently. It was about ten years ago when those things are going on. It's hard to believe they're still going on now. I've seen what happens when rich people come to the city and complain about things. Rich people moving to the city wanting bicycle lanes, so we tear up entire blocks and neighborhoods and kill local businesses that have been here for years to appease them. Homeless people end up in the parks, so we basically call in the state police on bicycles and pay millions of dollars in overtime to the police and call in the bulldozers. You know, anytime a homeless candidate shows up around town, same thing happens again. We clear cut all, we clear cut entire acres of woods, yet we call ourselves a green city when that happens. These people are asking to be safe in their homes and basically they just get nothing from the city. In fact, learning that a block of city-owned property is contributing to the problem and you guys aren't doing anything is disgusting. You're willing to destroy downtown so rich people can be happy on their bicycles that aren't even from Kalamazoo, that haven't lived here and you got people that have lived here for twenty, thirty, forty years, generational homes even, that aren't even safe in their own homes because you guys aren't taking care of your own property? That's disgusting.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Chase Platty and I live in the city. I was just telling my friend how angry I am about today's agenda and amendments proposed by Jim Ritzma and they told me that if an item is on the agenda, it is already too late. Commissioners, this should not be the case. Why is it that no matter what is proposed by Jim Ritzma, you always say yes, no matter what? In order to do something and to actually help provide for the people and residents of Kalamazoo, you need to vote yes on effective policies and vote no to policies that are bad and wasteful and do not help the residents and people that desperately need help in this city. I'm asking you commissioners to please do your due diligence before the meetings and make yourselves very aware of the funds that this city has. This city has funds and make yourself very aware of what is, what this money is going towards with these proposals and to vote with your own conscience and to be informed. For example, these ARPA funds that were on the consent agenda and now will be on the general agenda. These ARPA funds need to be used by the end of this year, by the end of twenty twenty-four. And the proposal is that these funds be transferred to, to other funds so it won't, so it can be used in the future. And these, such as nine hundred thousand dollars for parking system revenue replacement. This sounds like parking meters. We do not need to spend nine hundred thousand dollars on new parking meters. We need to spend this, this, these millions of dollars that we have at our disposal as a city on important things, on important projects that need to be done this year, by the end of the year, to get people off of the streets, to get, get people who don't have a home assistance to be able to get, to rent a house, to get off of the streets, to get their needs met. Saying yes, 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 to all, to all, everything that is proposed is not effective. It is not good governance. So please think about what you're saying yes to when you say yes and don't just say yes because the rest of the commissioners are saying yes. Please, Commissioner Wilson and Hess and Pradel and Cooney and Hoffman. And we would also like to see Collins returned to this, to this meeting. It is not accessible for people to get here, for people who are disabled, who have another job, who have kids, who have, who are not able to get here physically and they deserve to be a part of this public discussion as well. We, so we need to have Collins returned for this meeting. I hope, I hope you're listening to what, what people have been bringing to you today and that you do something different than what you've been doing and, and...
Thank you very much. Next, please. All right, thank you everyone that took the time and made the effort to come take advantage of public comment time. Next, the consent agenda, Manager Ritzma.
The following items have been presented for approval. Item one is, or two actually, is approval of a professional service agreement with Tetra Tech for the development of a stormwater utility business plan in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental change order with SWT Excavating Incorporated for the fiscal year twenty-three, DWRF Contract One, the water system improvements and cost share with the Kalamazoo Township and the Road Commission of Kalamazoo County in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Next is the adoption of a resolution recommending approval of a social district permit for Crafted Copper Partners LLC doing business as Crafted Copper located at two twenty-nine East Michigan Avenue. Next is the approval of a second amendment to the lease agreement with Nineteen Props LLC for the community planning and economic development office space at two forty-five North Rose. Next is the approval of an amendment to the off premises sign agreement with Adams Outdoor Advertising approved, approved on October two, twenty twenty-three to allow for the billboard being reconstructed along I ninety-four to be placed on an adjacent parcel to the one in the original agreement. Next is the approval of the appointment of Bonnie Finkst to the city of Kalamazoo, as a city of Kalamazoo representative to the Public Media Network Board of Directors. And finally, approval of the mayor's appointment of Katie Bortman to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring on January one, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you very much, Manager Ritzma. So correct me if I'm wrong on this, commissioners, but I believe the requested action is a motion to approve items two, four, six and thirteen through sixteen and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Kirk Burley.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we are on to H, the regular agenda. Manager Ritzma.
H one is approval of a twenty-year renewable energy contract with Consumers Energy to provide one hundred percent renewable energy and to retire renewable energy credits annually on the city's behalf.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yes, we have Director James Baker, Public Services, and Justin Gish, our sustainability planner. They're going to give a brief presentation. And I would remind the commission and the public, we had a committee of the whole meeting at our last meeting, which went into depth on what's being proposed here this evening.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Welcome Director Baker, Justin Gish and our representative from consumers. Director Baker.
All right, well, thank you very much. The three of us will just go through the short presentation. We thank everybody that was able to attend the committee the whole session last time we met and so we're going to give just a little bit of a, a rehash on that previous presentation. You know, real three topics that we're going to focus on tonight, we're going to talk about the community sustainability plan and how that is, guides us and relates to the recommendation that we're making tonight. Consumers is going to go into some detail on how that program works and then we're also going to summarize some of those costs and impacts to different funds. Just kind of getting right into it, the community sustainability plan was adopted by the city commission back in twenty twenty-two. This really provides that framework for us, kind of our guiding principles, our north star, for us to kind of recommend programs and implementations. Each director within the city kind of works within their area to really work out these goals. You know, we've got the community sustainability plan and then within that, we've got specific goal areas. Specifically, what we're talking about today is goals that are outlined within the affordable, efficient city area. So this is really part of that program where we're, we're focused on to decrease emissions, to accelerate local renewable energy investments and to transform buildings into save energy and, and money. We also look at, in terms of municipal operations, so when we say city Kalamazoo, we're talking about the operations of the city, not necessarily the residents that live in the city. That's a, that's a, that's a different group. When we look at all of the emissions for city operations, we're talking about fifty thousand, one hundred metric tons annually. Forty-nine percent of that greenhouse gas emissions are from the electric usage of water and wastewater utilities, so that's a big component of the overall footprint of that. We're talking specifically about forty-eight point six million kilowatt hours annually. So if you see, there's, will be a contract, we'll get into that, that contract would be for that amount, that forty-eight point six million. So that's, that's a, a big amount and with that, I'll turn it over to Consumers Energy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, you have the opportunity to approve something great, something monumental for the city of Kalamazoo. This is an opportunity to join like-minded businesses, municipalities and governments. And the opportunity is to join our renewable energy program. Our renewable energy program is a local program. It's a program that supports new renewable resources in the great state of Michigan. It is a flexible program. You're able to customize to suit your sustainability goals. It is a cost-effective program. We are not asking for any money upfront, no onsite construction. It is a turnkey program, as in we completely manage this operation on, and, on your behalf. So no upfront costs and no maintenance on your end. Advantages to the organization and to the environment. You're able to meet your customers' and investors' sustainability expectations, easily meet leadership's carbon reduction goals, improve brand reputation for the city of Kalamazoo, contribute to the local community, get ahead of regulatory requirements, decrease cost of capital and protect the planet. In twenty twenty-two, enrolled businesses have already achieved a hundred and seventy thousand metric tons of CO2 offset, as well as five plus million in reduced energy bills. And to talk about the planet, we'll talk about the impact on what this program would do for the city of Kalamazoo. So with subscribing over forty-eight million kilowatts per hour per year, that is equivalent to one point nine million gallons of diesel consumed each year, twenty-two million pounds of coal burned each year, and my favorite, the one point three billion numbers of smartphones charged every single year. Our program is quite simple, as I talked about it last, last time. First step is truly to sign the contract and enroll in the program to join those like-minded businesses and organizations such as GM, Walmart, the state of Michigan, and, and as of early today, the city of Grand Rapids. Step two, new solar or wind projects are competitively bid and fixed subscription fee is determined. Number three, new solar or wind sources are constructed. Number four, Consumers Energy sells that energy into the MISO market at market price. Number five, the subscription fee and market value credits are applied to a utility bill, net difference is exchanged. And then number six, the RECs, which are the renewable energy credits, are retired annually in your name with assistance station provided. So what we're looking at, at the screen here is the future of energy prices and without a doubt, it's being forecasted that those prices are going to continue to go up. With this subscription plan that you would be participating in, you would have a fixed subscription at sixty-four dollars per megawatt hour. That's that blue line going across. As energy prices continue to increase in the state of Michigan, you only pay that subscription fee of sixty-four dollars per megawatt hour and that green line represents the future cost of energy. With our program, if the fixed subscription fee is less than the market value of the renewable energy generated, you will receive bill savings and this program is a way to hedge against future energy prices. How does this work on your bill? You have a hundred and ninety-some accounts that we're talking about putting on with this program. The bill doesn't change as far as your energy consumption or all the different variables that are associated with a normal utility bill. The only thing different, once this, once you're subscribed to our program, is that there will be some charges on the bottom of it that have your electrical charges, they have your energy subscription for each account and then below that is your energy credit and capacity credit. And right now, those are forecasted to be a savings. And right now, those are forecasted to be a savings, and in the future, to continue to be those savings. So what's the overall benefits to the City of Kalamazoo? The benefits of our renewable energy program outweigh the risks. This is Michigan-based solar and wind energy production. It complements energy efficiency and onsite solutions, so if you wanted to add solar yourself in the future, you can do that. Our program is flexible, and you only are subscribed to what you're using each month. There's no electrical infrastructure upgrades required. There's no project maintenance or management required on your end. There's no upfront cost investments, and this is an opportunity for savings. It functions as a hedge against future energy prices. What are the downsides? There is a market risk, and the resources are not visible onsite.
Sure, just kind of wrapping it up here, these are estimated costs per fund if we were to pay the full amount in any annual year. As you heard from Ryan, there certainly is market risk involved in this. We don't anticipate that we would be paying every year. Likely, there could be good years and bad years, and as the program goes out in time, that risk is mitigated. You know, just kind of summarizing where our goals meet the Consumers Energy program and where this kind of really comes together to make a strong recommendation, really is focusing on the Community Sustainability Plan, our community and city commission goals, and then cleaner air here in Michigan and in Kalamazoo. That is all supported by local renewable energy investments and that MISO market that allows us to be able to receive subscription and capacity credits into the future. You know, kind of coming towards the end here, we are recommending contract approval tonight, but that doesn't mean action in 2024. That program would actually begin in 2028. So, the deadline for signing up is September of 2024, so we're kind of preparing for the future with this recommendation. And that's it. I think we'll move forward for Commissioner questions.
Thank you very much, Director Baker, and Ryan and Justin, appreciate you being here. Questions for staff at this time? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all again for the recap. Commissioner Decker is not able to be here tonight, however, she did ask me to ask the question in reference to how many other businesses have signed up in Kalamazoo County?
Yes, thank you for that. Commissioners should have in front of you a frequently asked questions handout. That handout's got a lot of questions on it that we've heard from community members, that we've heard from, you know, commissioners as we've been presenting this work. I did want to highlight that we have also presented this to the Utility Policy Committee, and the Utility Policy Committee made a recommendation to move forward to the City Commission. To our knowledge, there are nine current businesses in Kalamazoo County that are enrolled in this program. We know that there are many more that Consumers Energy is talking with, that may make the deadline, they may not, or they may come in future years, but that number right now for Kalamazoo County is nine of them. I also wanted to highlight that this is a very new program, so there, you know, at this point, in terms of cities, there's one other city, City of Grand Rapids. You know, a little unfortunate that City Kalamazoo wasn't first, but nevertheless, there are other cities of that are beginning in this work. You know, Kalamazoo is a leader in terms of our representation statewide. There are 83 counties in the state of Michigan, and Kalamazoo County is leading the pack at 23% representation in this program right now. So, nine might not sound like a big number, but there's some big movement happening right away. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Director Baker. I'll just say, like, Kalamazoo is that city that really jumpstarts things, so I think there will be a ripple effect with other businesses within the county, once the city, we make a decision whether to support this or not. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
Mayor, thank you all for the recap once again. I had a question on the current trends for the energy pricing, or sorry, energy rates. I think in recent months, it's been significantly lower than the 64, 65 that we're estimating it here to be for '24. I was wondering if you guys consider that to be more of an anomaly, or do you guys see that impacting the forecast for energy rates down the line?
Yeah, so when forecasting these rates, we try to be as conservative as possible, and so we want to make sure that we're in line with the goals of Consumers Energy, as well as the goals of the City of Kalamazoo. So, we utilize a third party called Argus and IHS to help determine these forecasted goals and truly rely on them in the energy sector. And so currently, it is forecasted that, you know, it dips above and below that 64, but as we look at the further years, that continues to grow. And so that's why we're recommending the 20-year program, because just like a 401K, you don't want to pull out your money too early. You want to be subscribed at that $64 per megawatt-hour so that you can retain those future savings in ROI.
Good question. Commissioner Pradel?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. We've heard pretty overwhelming support of this from residents so far. One item that I have heard from some more expert residents is just the concern that when you're agreeing to a 20-year contract, that over the course of a 20-year period, that technology could advance significantly, or renewable energy could look a lot different than it does today. Could you speak a little bit about that and your thoughts about that concern?
Well, there's no question that as years go on, technology does get better. You know, I used to have a TV with a back on it, and my son will never see one of those as they're so thin and light these days. So, technology is fantastic. But the good news about our program, and I really hammer home this point, is that it's flexible. So if new things come on over the next 10 years and you want to add them to the city, say, if solar becomes more affordable for the city and you want to add those to your grid, you can do that. It will just lessen your subscription fee. It will lessen the energy used. If you continue to purchase energy efficiency programs, equipment, different things for the city, that just lowers your energy consumption, and again, lowers that subscription fee. So, this subscription program moves with you, not against you.
Awesome. I know we talked about this during the committee of the whole meeting as well, but in terms of diversification of where the sources are coming to us, to kind of hedge risks, should there be some, you know, major transmission catastrophe or whatnot, can you talk a little bit about how you hedge risks in terms of if there would be some disruptions to us, especially considering that this would be powering some of the most energy-consuming assets in the county, our wastewater and our water reclamation?
Yeah, this one came up before, and I, we haven't done a good job of kind of explaining. So, the solar field is not going to be linked to any city facilities, it's going to go straight into the grid, and there's really no way to trace that electron that's produced from those solar panels to our grid. So essentially, there's no change whatsoever. So any catastrophe that you're kind of describing here could happen now. It's the same grid, it's the same lines. We're committed to buying this power, and if that field goes down, we'll still get the power, they'll just have to figure out how to pay us back in RECs, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, I just know that was a question.
And to add to that, that's one of, again, the great points of our renewable energy program, is that if you were to have your own solar garden or field at City of Kalamazoo, if something did happen, that would be your only asset right there. With the Consumers Energy Utility Network, we have a whole pool of wind and solar that's generating this renewable energy, so we're safe to get you that energy.
Just to get your perspective, too, Justin, from sustainability's managerial position here with the city, your people, well, I think you described as particularly monumental. When you looked at our plan that we adopted in 2022, I mean, did you think this would ever be possible this soon? And also, when you're described as monumental, how does that make you feel?
Yeah, no, I feel good about this plan. You know, again, coming into this position, I was fairly naive on the energy front, so I think some context matters, too. The average American home, according to EPA, uses 10,000 kilowatt-hours a year. The City of Kalamazoo uses 2.3 million kilowatt-hours a year. All right, so it's apples and oranges when we're talking about solar panels on roofs of buildings or parking lots or things like that. Also, you have to take into fact, or take into account that the City of Kalamazoo owns, you know, over 55 bits of infrastructure. One pump house in Alsable uses 2.1 million kilowatt-hours a year. And I said 2.3 million kilowatt-hours, what are we, we're at like 50 million kilowatt-hours? So yeah, I definitely undersold this there. So one building uses 2.1 million kilowatt-hours, and that building's square foot, the roof, the square footage is 255 square feet. All right, so it's 2.1 million kilowatt-hours, a 255-square-foot roof. The largest roof that the city has is the Crosstown Parkway Public Safety Building. That roof is 26,000 square feet of usable space for solar panels, and if we covered that roof with those solar panels on that 26,000 square feet, we would reach 14% of that building's energy use. So a system like this, I just, I don't know how we meet our goals without something like this, if that answers that question.
I think you described before how many acres it would take of solar.
Yeah, hundreds of acres, and I get the parking lot concerns, you know, it looks like open space, but it's just not feasible for a system like ours at the city here, now at this moment. And that's not to say, again, that we couldn't put in solar parking lots in some buildings and decrease some of that kilowatt-hours that we purchased from consumers, but if we're going to get rid of the bulk of our emissions, we just kind of need to enroll in a program like this.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Sure. Thanks again, guys. First of all, I thought we were going to be the first municipality. Grand Rapids must have their meetings before we do.
According to Ryan, they haven't signed yet.
Okay.
They did today. And you all still have the opportunity today.
So, I was going to ask you, the Director Baker or Justin, if you've spoken to the folks in Grand Rapids and what they said and what they were thinking, are they, they're fully on board and they, they're doing it for the same reasons that we're doing it?
I haven't spoken to them yet. I didn't find out about Grand Rapids until today. I came in this meeting thinking that we would be number one. But no, I'm sure that they're doing the same thing. They have a Community Sustainability Plan, they're trying to get to net zero as well. Again, you know, without this and that zero goal coming up in 26 or so years, taking a giant chunk out of our emissions is the, it's the way to do it. So I'll be reaching out to them and figure out how we can both celebrate together.
How we can reach net zero together. It's a wonderful competition, makes us both better. So, just to bring in the public comment that was, that was brought up, and I don't know if you were here, Ryan, when you, when we heard that, asking that these, that the fields be built high enough for agriculture underneath, is there a plan yet for those fields? And can you address the, our commenter? Derek, thank you.
If you'll permit, one more presenter here. I'm Derek Knopf, handle local government, community affairs, so I've spent a lot of time all over southwest Michigan, talking to a lot of the townships where we're putting ordinances in place, you know, to create solar fields where a lot of this farmland is located. Most of the ordinances I've seen require, like, have a height requirement, just for, like, visual purposes, like for the neighbors, they don't want these things 20 feet high. What I have seen, there's a lot of stuff, I'd say nothing's off the table in terms of, like, emerging technologies. There are panels that can, of course, tilt and pan, and I've seen some experiments with tilting panels that go vertical, and then you can drive a piece of equipment in between the rows, and you're able to actually farm. So, they're working on all kinds of things like that. As of right now, we've got pollinators in most of our solar fields, and last year, I don't know if anyone caught it, but out at Western Michigan University, we had a lovely herd of sheep who was grazing away out in the field. So, there are agricultural possibilities.
Thank you for that, Derek. I appreciate that, and it's necessary that we address all of the possibilities. But the field isn't built yet, correct?
Correct, correct, correct. Can I add one more thing on that?
Sure.
The Michigan Farm Bureau says there are 10 million tillable acres in the state of Michigan. In order to achieve our goals statewide, we need to build on about 2% of that.
Other questions, commissioners, at this point? All right, thank you, gentlemen, really appreciate it. Just a brief response to your question about Grand Rapids, I did have an opportunity to have a very short communication with Mayor Rosalind Bliss, and yes, you know, I was hoping to sway her from moving so quickly, but similar interest up there in Grand Rapids, getting for the goals that they have set for themselves as well. And just a question for you, Mayor Rizma. I just, we've had several presentations on this, which I really appreciate it. You spent a bunch of staff time. What kind of evaluation have we done in-house as we've been looking at this program? I know we've had our CFO involved in it, what other kinds of...
Oh, yeah. So, a team has, you know, worked with consumers, evaluated this. You mentioned it's gone through the Utility Policy Committee, so, yeah, this has been well-vetted with our staff and thus the recommendation for this evening.
Okay, appreciate that. With no other questions for staff at this time, now as I predict for anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item, it's item H1.
I'm Taylor Renwinkle, I'm the Climate Sustainability Coordinator at the county. I just wanted to come again, I was at the, the last time it was up at the Committee of the Whole, the workshop a couple weeks ago, 13 days ago exactly, and I just wanted to voice my support of this proposal. I work closely with Justin on a lot of projects, really to sustainability and coordinating across the county and the city's plans, and it's really important to think about not just the impact that Kalamazoo has on their emissions, lowering their emissions, right, but also as an example to the community and the surrounding areas across the county. In 2019, Kalamazoo, the City of Kalamazoo passed a climate resolution, and since then, there's been about six other municipalities that's passed them as well, and it's directly led to my position at the county being funded and created. And so there's really a lot of impact that trickles down, not just the positive impacts that Justin has already talked about, but there's also a lot of rippling impacts that we've seen historically, and I think that we can see again. So really, what I'm asking is that I think it's going to be helpful, make my job a little bit easier in the long run, when I, when I'm working to do similar projects in the future.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Ruth Mordech. I'm a resident of Woodstone Avenue in Kalamazoo, and I am here to thank the commission for supporting so far this proposal and for what it can mean for meeting the city's climate action goals. I also just would take this opportunity to comment that in one of the slides, the gentleman from Consumers Power showed, saving the planet was sixth, the sixth-listed benefit. To this, I hope that the city government can take more seriously and make that a higher priority than it seems to be for Consumers Energy. I also would like to point out that in terms of further implementation of the city's climate action plan, that you have the opportunity to be proactive in affecting other issues that are going to be affected by the climate crisis. The climate crisis is a threat multiplier for many of the other concerns that people have raised today in terms of flood... in terms of flood control, in terms of housing. Michigan is predicted to be a climate crisis, a climate migration destination that will inevitably boost housing costs across the state. And the city has the opportunity at this point to get ahead of that curve if it chooses to. And there are a number of other things that are exasperated, exacerbated by the climate crisis. And the city has an opportunity to address those things now instead of later. And I appreciate your work and I look forward to learning more about what the city does to pursue its climate action plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Ray Sweeney, and I'm a resident of the city. Basically, I'm a fan of all this. I've written you separately. And I'm still the fan of the fans, the turbans. We will require the turbans to be part of the mix, and I'm glad they're there. Today, I got calls from 30 people asking for some sort of relief for evictions and for utility shut-offs. And there are a number of people that are living on the edge, who are, for one reason or another, getting spilled off the edge and into some sort of oblivion almost. I don't know what the solution is, but initially, this plan will result in increases in utilities for the citizens of the city. It's for a good goal, but I hope there can be ways to cushion that so that this isn't a contributor to their, to their problems. I recall, you know, that we, you have instituted water increases and sewage increase fees to finance the development of new projects and protect the system from some of the outfalls. But it does come as a cost. And so the proposals for energy, rather, revenue-neutral carbon taxes was a way of redistributing some of the wealth to those that are impacted most, that are needing the help. So keep that in your awareness as you make your decisions. And I hope it all happens for the good of everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to comment on this item? Seeing no one, just as a reminder, Ray, this is just for city properties. This will not affect any residential bills in the Kalamazoo. So we're just doing this for city-owned properties, if that was not clear. So commissioners, since there's no more comments, the recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Further discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Pradel.
I could sense the disappointment about not being the first community to institute this. But I think, and I love the idea of being first, but I care far more about the care we take for the planet. And so I think we can still hold our head high. The city of Kalamazoo consistently punches above its weight. I think this is another example of where we're still showing that we're a leader. And at the same respect, too, how awesome is it that two major communities in west Michigan are leading the front on sustainability? I really do believe this is a monumental step for our community. Just to put it into perspective, I mean, again, 48.6 million kilowatts per hour annually. And when you look at the fact that we are such an energy-usage behemoth, if you will, because we're processing wastewater and providing water to a quarter of a million people that comes through our systems. And so the fact that we're going to be 100% renewable energy, I mean, wow, that is fantastic. And it's definitely a step in the right direction. I'm excited about this and I'm glad that it's such a turnkey opportunity for our community. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Rulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H2. Manager Risma.
Approval of a contract with Owen Ames Kimball for the construction of the Farmers Market multipurpose building in the amount of $5,391,592.
Thank you, Manager Risma. Their staff report on this item.
Yes, our Parks and Recreation Director, Patrick McVary, will give a brief presentation on this.
Hello, Parks Director. Nice to have you here.
Nurse, the item before you is the construction contract with Owen Ames Kimball for the construction of the multipurpose building at the Farmers Market. You'll recall, I have a couple of slides showing the renderings that we have. We've come up before to talk about this. So this is one of the renderings that we have of what the market building will look like. This will serve a few different uses throughout the year and for the community. This will be the building that'll take the place of the Youth Development Center. That's aging infrastructure for our after-school programs and our summer camp program. That will be housed at the building. The building will also be a community meeting space, much like the Station 5 Community Center that we have. So neighborhood associations and local community groups can actually rent the space to use as far as community meetings. The building will also have a commercial kitchen in it to be able to utilize for classes or cooking demonstrations. And then one of the major uses will also benefit the Farmers Market as well. As you see, kind of along the outside of the building, it'll have an open-air concept to it that will be able to be utilized during the summer markets on the weekends to open up, to house more vendors. And then also, it'll be able to be utilized in the wintertime to extend the market season, which currently we do not have at the Farmers Market. Along with the building and the surrounding area, there will also be an outdoor seating area as well as a playground that will actually be built with the building as well. Currently, the base of the construction contract that we have from Owen Ames Kimball puts the building construction beginning pretty much as soon as possible and then concluding right now around Labor Day of next year. So then we'll be able to have the building turned back over, utilize it for the Farmers Market hopefully right away, and then transition the after-school programs and everything into that over the fall months. So happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Vice Mayor Hess.
Sure. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate your work on this, and I know it's been several years in the making.
Yes.
Can you tell me, how many youth are served by the after-school programs at this point? And?
The after-school program currently at the Youth Development Center varies between, I think the most capacity-wise that we're able to house there is between 25 and 30, depending on the number of staff. The Youth Development Center is pretty kind of cramped and there's not a lot of space that the programs are allowed to utilize. The market building will actually be 9,000 square feet. So that'll actually give us a lot more usable space to actually house more kids for the after-school program and then the same for the summer camp as well.
Oh, cool. Okay, great. And this is, this would be another gem in the middle of the Edison neighborhood.
It would, yes.
Being able to do some neighborhood association meetings there, things like that.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Commissioner Pradel.
Thanks for being here. I was just wondering if you could describe if the public can anticipate any disruptions with the Farmers Market in the next season, if you will, because of construction?
Yeah, that's a great, great point. There will be a little bit of disruption specifically for the areas that the food trucks are staged in right now. The only reason being is because that's going to be like a main transition area from where we have the tentative construction site plan layout, where they'll actually be setting up all of their equipment and whatnot to mobilize and construct the building. So that, that area on kind of the south side of that open lot right now will actually affect where the food trucks are. Hopefully, we'll be able to move those somewhere within the market so they're able to actually capitalize on them being there. One of the things that they're actually being displaced for is there will actually be permanent electrical bollards, if you will, in that location. So they're not having to come in to connect to that one pole that's out by the street. They'll actually have their own dedicated electrical source there that they're able to plug into. Though there will be a little bit of parking disruption. Kind of the southeast corner of the parking lot will be taken by the construction equipment. The southwest portion will still be open. I've spoken to the market, kind of leading into our kickoff meeting at the end of this week, and nothing will be affected until, actually, if everything's signed and approved by the commission, until possibly next week. They have a night market this week on Thursday night as well, so we want to get through that and then the market on this, this coming Saturday. Unfortunately, with the construction schedule and the amount of work that they're doing, it will affect into next year. I don't know exactly if that'll be the same footprint that we have kind of laid out for them right now. Hopefully, it'll be smaller, but it will impact a little bit as far as parking.
There's a line that just says, "The funding available and the estimated costs are detailed below. We are requesting approval for the purchase using the funds below." It just lists the 5.3 million. But if I'm not mistaken, there's other sources that are helping fund this project.
Yeah, yes.
Can you describe those other sources that are helping us get to that mark?
We have a good amount of grants. We received a million-dollar grant from the Irving S. Gilmore Foundation when the project kind of took light. We also have received close to $1 million from the state RAP grants through Southwest Michigan First. And then some ARPA funds were allocated to that as well. So, yeah, it's, the project construction costs have come in under budget. We're anticipating everything being under budget as of right now.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Patrick McVary? All right, thank you so much for your work and your presentation. I appreciate that very much. With no more questions, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item, H2?
Yes, hello, I'm Kay from the People. And I just want you all to know that $3 million is being allocated from the ARPA funds was approved for this. And I want you all to think about the crises that are currently happening. As we stated before, and we will continue to state again, what this money could have done. This money is actually going towards gentrification because Tina comes here and when she talks about 209 East Stockbridge, that's really close to this. This is going to propel, that, that neighborhood is already disenfranchised. The people are experiencing flooding. And what did the, they said the flooding there would cost, what, like 2.5 million dollars to remediate in that area? So we're talking about things we could have done, the priorities of the city. I'm telling you right now, they are so skewed. And I wish that we didn't call you all the YES Commission, but we do because like, you all really need to look at where, follow the path, right? All these, all these things, we cannot take these things at face value anymore. We're living at the end. We're living in a climate crisis, an environmental crisis, a housing crisis, all of these crises. And this is what we choose to do in a time when we should be planting more trees, when we should be conserving our, our environment, when we should be putting more towards housing, when we should be doing something different than the countries and we're doing exactly the same, if not worse. Because we have the FFE. We have a whole organization that stabilizes our budget, that we should be seeing more housing, more affordable housing. We should be seeing these disenfranchised neighborhoods be renewed, you know? Give the people opportunity that live in the neighborhoods to have a say. But this, this is gentrification again. And I, and like, it's, it's really hard, you know, to like, to see these projects and know and be in the streets every single day and know that there's people out there. There's families, there's newborns living at Arcadia Festival site, which that construction is going to, well, that's aside, but that's ARPA money. But we see, we see everybody, like, the crisis in the streets. I mean, KDPS is the solution and the Gospel Mission and the, is the solution for homelessness. And that shouldn't be the case. We should be putting this money towards something else. And like, my hope would be, you know, that one day y'all would be like, you know what? You're right, like, the community is right. You know, we should put this money towards helping the homeless situation. We should, you know, put that towards starting a Housing First pilot program. How like monumental would that be for the city to start a Housing First program instead of putting another building somewhere, instead of doing like a Hard Rock Cafe downtown and an amphitheater and all these new things that we're building when we should be planting trees? I mean, very simply put, we should be planting trees. We should be caring about the climate crisis of the people in the city. And it's like, no, it's all going towards the people who are affluent, things that the affluent people want to see. I want you to know that you should not approve anything for 209 East Stockbridge unless there's an environmental study on because this is a catalyst, a very bad catalyst for the city. And ARPA money, money that was supposed to go towards people in need.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to comment on this item?
Good evening. Jeff Masser, city resident and adopter of Davis Street Park and Skateboard Plaza. So earlier this year, I don't know, February, maybe January, Dr. Cooney said that he thought that the city should have a municipal facility where the unhoused can go during the winter and sleep when the temperature falls below 20 degrees Fahrenheit. I would like to advance that this will be that facility. As you know, the public, the city commission and city staff, they need to be pushed. You need to have like, you know, a dozen people from the north side come and say, "Do something about the crappy houses that the city owns on the north side." By the way, Commissioner Hoffman lives on the north side. An earlier speaker didn't, wasn't aware of that. Anyway, so one way you can, obviously, you can push the city commission here among parks issues. And you can contact staff at another forum, and which City Commissioner Chris Pradel is the commission liaison to, is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They regularly meet on the first Tuesday of every month at the community room at Mayor's Riverfront Park, which is where the Growlers baseball team plays. So you can, you can come and start pushing the park staff. Patrick, the current Parks Director, he spoke just before. He's, he's seemed very open to suggestions that I've, that I've made and others have made. The Parks Board meetings are very informal. So please, if you, if you want to push, push the Parks Board to make a recommendation to the city commission and the staff that this facility should be used for that purpose. Specifically, yeah, I've made a number of suggestions to Patrick. He's very open, very open, very, very different than the previous directors. So let, let, don't let this opportunity go by. This is going to be a multi-use facility, and let's really make it multi-use. And really, thanks to climate change, there aren't that many days that are that cold during the winter anymore. There aren't that many days with snow on the ground, like, seriously. That's why I wasn't so great on the sidewalk snow removal thing. I was like, yeah, well, you know, I remember when it used to be, the snow would fall, you know, around Thanksgiving and the snow would stay on the ground for several months. And then around St. Patrick's Day, it would be gone. But please use these opportunities. There are advisory boards that the city commission has. And I wish that more often the city commission would seek the advice and consent of its advisory boards and the advisory boards would make reports and recommendations to the city commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Zachary Lassiter. I live in the city. So I don't know for sure if this is being ARPA-funded or not. I haven't looked that deeply into it. But if it is, I think there are better priorities for those funds than this. I think just based on what people have said at this dais here tonight, there are better uses for that money than this. Yes, this meets what ARPA, the Congress has laid out as a valid use for this money legally by Congress. But there's a lot of things people can do that doesn't mean it's the best thing to do. Legally, I could stand here and give you all the middle finger. Doesn't mean it's the best thing for me to do. Doesn't help me get my point across either. But the First Amendment tells me I can do that. ARPA funds aren't unlimited. They're meant for, you know, helping those that have been impacted the most through what happened. And this, I mean, while it meets the legal criteria of what Congress laid out, it's a yuppie s- a yuppie, you're using it like a yuppie slush fund.
Thank you. Next, please. Seeing no one, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve, is there a motion?
No.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Discussion, Commissioners. Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, since this project has come up, I think it was a couple of years ago now, I've always been speaking, like, we could allocate this money towards some housing. We are in a crisis, and I understand that we need another space for youth development and to really, really pour into our youth. However, we have some phenomenal programs, and I just don't know if this money today should be utilized in this way. I would love to see this money, the ARPA dollars that I have been pushing for, we need more transitional housing in our community, and we need more permanent supportive housing. Now, I say all that with the understanding that housing costs have risen to a place where it really is unaffordable. However, we make those priorities for housing, for workforce development housing, we need to invest in housing that will serve 30% and below. And ARPA dollars, although this is a usable project with the ARPA, we have people sleeping on the streets, and it hurts my heart. And so with that, me, for myself, I cannot vote in support of this. I feel that money should be used to really get people off of the streets and to do something more intentional and strategic around housing and housing our home, our houseless individuals and those who are suffering from high rent rates. We should be doing more with that for our people.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other discussion? All right, seeing none, Clerk Borland, please call a roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Next is the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 36, Article 10, to add a new section, 36-290. I shall let you read this right now. Okay.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. Pedestrians in work zone areas. And, Manager Ritzma, is there any additional staff report on this?
No, Your Honor. The presentation was given during the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Liao. Yeah, there was a great presentation, which is, will be available online relative to the first reading of this ordinance. At this point, any Commissioners here have any questions about that? We all saw that. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this one, item Seeing none, the recommended action is a motion to offer the ordinance for first reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, seeing none, Clerk Borland, please call a roll.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H4, City Manager Ritzma.
Yes, we have first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 22-19, impeding pedestrian or vehicular passage.
Thank you so much, Manager Ritzma and Attorney Liao. We did have a report at the Committee of the Whole on this item as well. I presume you are not intending to have anyone on your team repeat that for this meeting?
No, Your Honor, but we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
Sure. We talked about this at the Committee of the Whole, but I had asked the question earlier whether this was in response to just instances that have been seen that have happened, or whether this is meant to be more of a proactive approach to prevent accidents from happening. I was just wondering if you could just kind of share that again, just.
Yes, this, well, the first ordinance is to, which H3 was to get proactive in trying to prevent any accident, all the construction that is going on in the community, to our city streets, there are a lot of areas that have been barricaded with the orange, not cones, but barricades that you see throughout the city. You know, there are instances where individuals are actually passing through those areas and into crossing the street, other than the Kyle's Walk. At the same time, you have motorists who are traveling in motor vehicles, who are trying to navigate through the construction and around with the detours. What we're trying to do is trying to prevent any type of accidents between motor vehicles and pedestrians on the roadways, being proactive, because if there are, liability can occur and arise against the city. So that's the ordinance that was H3. H4 is more of a clarification to the existing ordinance, which is the impeding pedestrian or vehicular package, passage, I'm sorry. There has been, when that ordinance was written, we did not have the bicycle lanes that are, that have been implemented and are being expanded throughout the city. So the current ordinance is not clear as to whether or not bicycles and bicycle lanes are covered within that. See, bicycles under the motor vehicle code are not actual vehicles, so in order to address that, we have included bicycles and the bicycle lanes in this ordinance, in this particular ordinance. So with the impeding pedestrian traffic that anyone or any individual or who is impeding vehicular traffic in bicycle lanes in the future, then, and if they are observed by a KDPS officer, they can be warned that not to impede the bicycle traffic, and if they do not heed that warning, then they can actually be charged with a misdemeanor offense. And so, but with that, again, what it is, is to more or less to clean up the ordinance to address all the bicycle lanes. The violations have not changed, it is still, we're just making sure that bicyclists that are traveling through the bicycle lanes are also doing so in a safe manner, not being impeded by any, any individuals or equipment or anything that may be within those bicycle lanes.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Any more questions at this time? All right, seeing none, is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item, this item H4?
Hi, my name is Chase Platy. My, my comment on this, on this item is that the change in language is a problem. It's changing the language from any person or persons on any street, sidewalk, or any other public place does any act which hinders or impedes, or could hinder or impede, the passage of pedestrians, bicycles, or vehicles. So this is problematic, the adding of the word "could hinder" or impede, because it's criminalizing behavior that could potentially happen, but nothing has actually occurred. So it's saying that people could be found guilty of, of a misdemeanor for something that they haven't done, or if someone was, was walking on the sidewalk, that, that could hinder bicycle traffic, or if they were walking in the bike lane. And I think that is extremely drastic consequence and criminalization of something that is not very serious. So I would, I would suggest that you take a look at the language of this again and change it to be more specific to the action that you're actually trying to, to avoid, which is collisions and safety of pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment on this item?
I also agree with Chase about the language in this. I want you all to know we have a problem with KDPS. The reason why black males are disproportionately affected by the resisting and obstructing charges, because they can just basically be questioning their rights, and the cops like, are you resisting? Are you obstructing? So we really have to be intentional with the language when we talk about KDPS, and how much of this, how much power this could give them to say, well, you, you could be impeding, right? Especially when it comes to downtown and all the construction, and sometimes, like, people walk, people can't help but walk through these places, because they have to get to the store, then they have to get to work, then they have to get to all the different places that they need to go. So this adds a layer of criminalization to this. So I'm, I'm just concerned, yeah, that that language is broad, and that KDPS, KDPS just sometimes, most of the time, they, they look for ways to criminalize homeless people, black people, brown people, indigenous people. So, yeah, that language is concerning. I think you all should really consider being more succinct, right, more specific. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
Good evening, Jeff Muster, city resident. I apologize for not taking the opportunity to read the agenda report for this item, nor attend today's 5 o'clock Committee of the Whole meeting. I do have a question on if there are any exceptions. I do frequently, frequently see a lot of vehicles illegally parked in the cycle track in downtown Kalamazoo in front of the Exchange Building, particularly delivery vehicles, mail delivery, package delivery, and I'm wondering if, what the exceptions are, if any, is it legal for a UPS truck, or FedEx truck, or US Postal Service vehicle to park in front, in the bicycle lane, the cycle track, in front of the Exchange Building, or anywhere else in downtown Kalamazoo? And also, if there is going to be any enforcement of this, one really bad spot is the, I don't know if it's Huntington Bank, but there's, there's an ATM on the Michigan Avenue side of the Exchange Building, and vehicles illegally park in the bicycle lane there all the time when they're using the ATM. So Chief Boyson and your officers, yeah, I've got a soft spot for the bicyclists, because I'm a pedestrian, I've been walking a lot. So, yeah, one particular area of focus, I would say, for enforcement would be Michigan Avenue in front of the Exchange Building. But Attorney Liao, could you please do me a favor and just let me know if it's legal for delivery vehicles to park? He's shaking his head, no, so, so like, it's 100%, do not park in a bicycle lane at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to offer this ordinance for first reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Discussion, Commissioners? Attorney Liao, any particular clarifying comments you think would be helpful, or?
I think I'd just like to clarify some of the comments that were given earlier by Kay and Chase. I just wanted to just explain, because they took, they were concerned about the use of the term "could hinder," as, this ordinance, the way it's proposed to do, I'm sorry, this ordinance is broken in as far as the unlawful behaviors in two parts. One is a person or persons, in this case, in the bicycle lane, who are actually in there that is disrupting or hindering actual bicycle traffic occurring at that instance. That is the first part. The second part, because there is actual, it's actually going on, the second part "could hinder" or "impede" is if there are individuals who are walking or standing in the bicycle lane. There may not be bicycle traffic actually traveling, but they, the possibility that they could actually hinder or impede that passage of bicycles going through the bicycle lane would also be the second part, or the second type of unlawful behavior. In either instance, if it's observed by a public officer or a public safety officer, they can, the, because this is a misdemeanor, their first step is to warn the person and give them a warning that that kind of behavior, either one, act number one or act number two, is unlawful under the ordinance, and to basically cease that activity. So I just wanted to make sure that the, the public is clear exactly that there are actually two different types of actions that are unlawful in this sort of, and I've described the kind of factual pattern that you'll see under either one, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Attorney Liao.
And.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Manager Ritzma did say at the end of the Committee of the Whole that should these be adopted next time, that you would put out social media information, City View, so on, so that people are aware that these are, these are happening, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Clerk Borland, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Now we have another set of items that were moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. First one is, was G1, Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a purchase of voice routers from Trace 3 through the MyDeal Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $112,850.02.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, Commissioners, the motion is to approve the purchase of voice routers with Trace 3 through MyDeal. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel? Supported by Commissioner Cooney. Discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk Borland, please call a roll.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, the motion passes. Next, formerly, item G3, Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a contract supplemental change order with bulk of site work and development for the Brookfield Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $205,657.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there any comments on this item? Commissioners, the motion is to approve the contract supplemental change orders, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman?
Second.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, Clerk Borland, please call a roll.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Borland. Next item was formerly G5, Manager Ritzma.
Approval of a cooperative contract with Axon Enterprises through Sourcewell Contract Number 101233-AXN for police records management in the amount of $999,365.83.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Chase Platy. I would like some clarification on the, the manner of this police records management, and what exactly about it is costing almost $1 million, $999,000, and what exactly is going to be used for? What, like, is it improving something about the police records? Does something need to be drastically changed, or what is, what is the situation here, that this amount, this amount of money is being used for police records management? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item?
Also, I would like clarification as well, you know, it's, it's kind of hard for sometimes community members to keep up with all of the meetings that there is, and I've been trying my best to go to as many meetings as I can, but, yeah, we are concerned, because, you know, policing is very concerning for BIPOC, and, you know, this is just like enhancing the way that the department can share information with, within each other, departments and agencies. It's just really concerning, right, when we talk about being a police state and how much power and authority the police has when it comes to, like, what we do, volunteer services, activism work, advocacy work. So, yeah, we are really concerned about why it's going to cost this much money, and if the system is out of date, does it need updating, what exactly? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this item? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this item?
Good evening. Jeff Muster, City Resident. I just want to remind the community that there is an agenda packet available for all of these meetings. It usually runs hundreds of pages, but staff has prepared an agenda report for every action item on the agenda. So when you go to the city's website, and if you could find the agenda directory, there are like six different options now for downloading. It used to be just like two. But one's the agenda and the other says the agenda packet. You want to download the one that says the agenda packet, or you can, there's all this online thing. But I just like to download the whole 700-page thing, whatever it is. But every one of these action items has a report that staff has prepared. And I've obviously not read this one, but that's a good place to start if, if you're going to comment on any of these items. Start with that agenda report, read it, and then, and then bring your, bring your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to comment on this item? Thank you. Manager Rizma, any particular details that could be briefly shared on this?
I guess our Chief Boyson could come forward and explain briefly what's being done here.
Welcome, Chief. Honored to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Yes, this is our records management system. So everything we do on the public safety side, we have to document in reports, and we have to track that. So we can produce documents upon request and submit reports for court and many purposes. So whether it's a criminal investigation, non-criminal accident report, everything we do is a report-based system. And so our current legacy system that we're using now is Hexagon, and it's well over 10 years old, and it's no longer supported. And I know our IT Director, Tim DuBois, was here and he's always really worried that at any minute that system could crash. So we're on borrowed time. We viewed many vendors, and this was actually one of the more cost-effective ones. This is for a 10-year agreement with Axon Records Management System. We currently use Axon products. They're Taser, body cams, and evidence management can all seamlessly flow into this Axon system. So we're going to have everything in one system. So we, like, again, looked at many different systems. We have to have a records management system, and this was one we chose to go with because it fits in with our existing programs that we are already using in a current Axon contract.
Thank you, Chief Boyson. Any questions for staff on this item? Thank you, sir. Very helpful. Appreciate it. Commissioners, the recommended action is approval of this cooperative contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel. Supported by Commissioner Cooney. Discussion Commissioners. Thank you. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next was formerly item G7. Manager Rizma.
Adoption of a resolution to enter into negotiations with the Michigan Department of Transportation to potentially eliminate three railroad crossings in the downtown area and to negotiate M.D.A. funding for the potential closures.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Commissioners, the motion is to adopt this resolution to enter into negotiations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
Just thank God. This would be great for the city of Kalamazoo.
Thank you.
Right. I, I did hear from some folks who actually support this, who are business owners downtown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next was formerly consent agenda item G8. Manager Rizma.
Approval of the reallocation of community homework CDBG funds from the code enforcement repair program to the critical repair program.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Commissioners, the request is a motion to approve the reallocation of community homework CDBG funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
I'm abstaining from this one because of my employer.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next item was formerly item G9. Manager Rizma.
Approval of updated investment allocations for the Perpetual Care Trust.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this item, item formerly G9?
I would just like some clarification briefly, if you can, about the Perpetual Care Trust and what the updated investments are.
Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Manager Rizma, you have anything you want to say about that? Okay. Just as a reminder, I mean, it was very informative to have been noted a little while ago that all this information is in the Commission packet that is available to anyone that's online. And would like to get a deep, deep dive into our sometimes several hundred-page Commissioner packet. It will have very particular details on items like this. Commissioners, there is a motion, we need a motion to approve the updated investment allocations for the Perpetual Care Trust. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Supported by Commissioner Cooney. Motion made by Commissioner Pradel. Any discussion, Seeing none. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next item was formerly G10. Manager Rizma.
Approval of a budget amendment for the American Rescue Plan Act to reallocate funds for various projects.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Or is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this item?
My name is Chase Platy. I did look at, I did, I know where the meeting documents are, and I have looked at the, the spreadsheet for this, this item. And it is spending money on, on transferring these funds, these ARPA funds to a different fund. And that, that would cause them to not be under ARPA anymore and not be required to be used by the end of 2024. And also, I'm worried about where the funds are being transferred, specifically the license, the license plate readers. Additional funding for the license plate reader program, I do not believe this is necessary or to keep the community safe. It says it's for a safe community. I, I don't think that is a needed expenditure for $115,000. And the parking system revenue replacement for $900,000 in order to support public infrastructure imperative to downtown business success. $900,000 to replace the parking system revenue? That sounds like parking meters. I, I, I believe this money can be better spent and not put into a different fund. It can, it can be used as ARPA funding in order to give support to community members. In, in many ways, I believe that, that the Commission has many options to use these funds by the end of the year. It, it does not have to be transferred to another fund in order to save, save it for, for these later projects. Rockwell Tennis Court Conversion, $115,000. This, this, this money can be used for essential programs right now. So, so please take this into account when you're, when you're voting on these, on these consent agendas, items that, this is, this is a lot of money that, that can be used for way better things. So I do, I do appreciate the RX Kids expenditure that is part of this bill that will be good for families in the community with new, new parents. That will help people with, with new babies, but it will not help any other parents or people without children under one-year-old.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to comment on this
I also think this is really broad. There is a lot of things that are good in here. But it, it, yeah, we don't need, need to expand the license plate readers so that KDPS can have tabs on people. And parking system revenue replacement as well. I mean, if you look at those two things on their own, like, those are some of the biggest things on here, and we could be putting more towards hope. The Hope Program is only 57,000. Early educational planning is only 60,000. Childcare business supports, 150, we have, well, there's a childcare crisis too, in case y'all didn't know. There is a childcare crisis. There's not enough childcare in this city to help the workforce. So I'm, like, this is really broad. And like, I do see like some good things being done, but I feel like we can just, if we could just bolster or like increase the funding in some of these programs, the city would just like revive the work, work, real workforce. Because the workforce is not 80,000, 100,000. The workforce is living below the poverty line. The workforce is working two or three jobs. And so it's like, yeah, we, we need, we need more support. I mean, this is really broad. And I feel like it's kind of like all over the place as well. There's not like a definite thing that this goes towards. It's just a bunch of random things. And like, I, 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 you know, I've been a big, like, I've been really outspoken about the way ARPA funds are being used. And this is the same thing for me. I see that we've waited this long since, what, 2020, 2021, when this money was allocated, and now we're here. And people are struggling. Homelessness has gone up in the schools. It's directly tied to that COVID tax, childcare tax that ended. That is literally the catalyst for the increase in homeless children. Because parents don't have those supports. And it's been said in this Commission, like, if people were just giving the funds, the support to, to decide what they're going, going to do, how they're going to better their situation, the city would, we would be, we wouldn't be here bothering you all. We wouldn't really be just, you know, we wouldn't be running around the city trying to catch all the, you know, the boards and figure out who's who and like who's in our side and why are these things happening? And what is the Lamb Bay doing? And what is the Sherpas Berry doing? And what is the FFP doing, right? We would be like, okay, look, the city is, is really putting a focus on housing. It's, you know, really, really specific things. This is really broad. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Zach Laster. I'm not going to go over the proper use of ARPA funds. You've already beat that to death, and you guys really just don't, well, you care about it, but the rest of you don't seem to. So I'm going to tell you what I do every morning when I work locally here. And then when I have appointments in town in the morning, what I do is there's a local coffee shop on the mall I go to, and I get an everything bagel toasted with cream cheese and a large mocha. And then I go to work when I was working locally, or I go to my appointment when I'm here in town. You're all going to put parking meters on the mall. How easy is it? Like, are you trying to kill that business? Half of that business is people coming in on the way to work to grab, grab a coffee or something to eat. You want them to park in their ramp for 90 minutes, walk three blocks to get their coffee on their way to work, walk back to the ramp, and then go to work. I mean, just it doesn't make sense on what you're trying to do. Like, I get you're trying to discourage people from parking all the time downtown, but maybe, I, it just doesn't seem like this is helpful in helping people get to those local businesses downtown. Plus, it's not a good use of ARPA funds, if that's what's going into this. I mean, just my thoughts. I want to get my everything bagel, and I want to get my large mocha. And I know other people don't want to walk three or six block, well, six blocks to go get that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to comment on this Commissioners, the recommended motion, the recommended action is a motion for approval of a budget amendment for the American Rescue Plan Act to reallocate funds for various projects. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. One possible misunderstanding is that the American Rescue Plan Act funds need to be spent by December 31st, 2026, and they need to be allocated by the end of 2024. So there's that little piece. Anything else you'd like to add to it, Manager Rizma?
Yeah, just, thank you for clarifying that. We have to have funds committed by the end of this year and spent by the end of 2026. And in general, you know, I know opinions have been expressed. What was presented here this evening is in line and has been vetted through a process based on Commission goals and in input. We have $295 million budget in the city, all funds, and we do a lot of work in different areas. So when you do see these things in various areas, that's because we do a lot of work in a lot of areas. Specifically for the parking system, I want to address that one. And, you know, to say that is not for parking meters, we had that presentation and worked through that a few meetings ago. Actually, that is for infrastructure repairs to the Epic Ramp that were discovered around the time we were talking about the parking system. And those are immediate repairs needed. So we identified some ARPA dollars to do that. Again, those are our ramps, the city-owned ramps, and we're responsible for infrastructure repair and replacement. So those funds were identified for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. I think we already have a motion on this. Is that correct? Okay. I'm losing track of things here. Discussion Commissioners. Seeing none. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Manager Rizma, the item that was formerly G11.
Yes. Approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2024 budget, increasing revenues by 900,000 and expenditures by 2,216,045.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve the budget amendments. Is there such motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman. Supported by Commissioner Cooney. Discussion Commissioners. Seeing none. Court Brolin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next is formerly item G12. Manager Rizma.
Approval of amendments to the Foundation for Excellence Bylaws and Articles of Inc. Corporation.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to comment on this item?
Good evening. Jeff Muster, City Resident. I would like to thank the Commission for their patience and their tolerance and this rule that allows any member of the public to take an item off the consent agenda and have it, have it addressed directly. This is a rule that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners doesn't have. The Kalamazoo Public Library doesn't have. At those meetings, there's a, there's a non-agenda public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and there's a non-agenda public comment at the end of the meeting. But there is no opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items specifically. If I'm elected to the Kalamazoo Public Library Board of Trustees this November, I would like to implement a rule, a bylaw change or whatever it is, that would allow the public to comment on any of our business, any of our action items. And regarding many of these nine items that were taken off the consent agenda, many of them were spending items. There is a, and the reason is the public wants to know why those go before the City Commission when they seem like routine things, is just because there's a City Commission rule that if it's a spending item of $100,000 or more, it goes on the consent agenda. And that's great. But one item I have asked for in the past, it used to be, up until sometime in 2019, there was a city manager's report once a month that was part there was a city manager's report once a month that was part of the agenda packet. It included all administratively approved spending items between like 50,000 and 99,999. I would again like to see that come back to our agenda packets. You know, if you're, believe in transparency, that would be great to have that information available as part of the agenda packets again. Thank you again for your patience and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is to approve the amendments to the Foundation for Excellence bylaws and articles of incorporation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none. Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next, reports in legislation. City Manager Ritzman, do you have a report?
Yeah, I would just like to address some of the concerns that were expressed by the residents on the north side relative to the Mobile Nuisance Party and, and other, you know, activities that occur up there. I asked Chief Boyson to reach out to those folks, and he was able to, to contact them in the hallway as they were leaving, and they've got a meeting next week to meet with them. And as you know, we've been talking about Mobile Nuisance Party and trying to address it for several years now, as was noted. And, you know, we thought we were making some progress, and then, you know, it comes back. So I know Public Safety is committed to addressing this issue and working with the residents, and it's encouraging to see the residents show up, because that's what's going to really drive change, is community involvement. And as Commissioner Cooney, it mentions all the time, collective action in how we address issues like this for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manager Ritzman. We are now at the time on our agenda for Commissioner comments. Is there anyone who would like to start off with Commissioner comments this evening? I don't know if that's just everyone's kind of exhausted, or if there is, we're all being exceptionally polite.
I'll go.
Or a combination thereof. Is there someone who would like to make any comments this evening?
I'll go.
Okay. Vice Mayor Hess.
We're all exhausted, and I know it, but I have these things to say. I appreciate my colleagues around the dais here for their work, and I guess we're all working toward the greater good of Kalamazoo. That said, Saturday, there was a Recovery Institute Festival right over here in Bronson Park. Many, many dozens of nonprofits and folks who are working with those unhoused in recovery and, and in addiction. And it was, to me, I saw the heart, I saw the care, and I saw the compassion of our city on full display in Bronson Park. And on Saturday, many people attended. It was wonderful. The resource, we do have the resources here. That said, another resource will be opening soon in Kalamazoo. Enlightened Recovery Center is opening on Alamo Avenue on September 26th. It's an addict, it's a private addiction treatment center, and will be of valuable service to the city of Kalamazoo. That said, there also are many, many things going on in the city which are all out there, but there's an Imagine Kalamazoo 2035. So if you want to be a part of the voice of imagining Kalamazoo, of our strategic planning for 2035, there's an open house on Thursday, September 19th at the KIA from 5:00 to 7:30. Come and know more about our city planning process, please. So many festivals, the Silence of the Zoo happening next week, the Canadian Fest, as was mentioned here, at the Arcadia Festival site on Saturday from 1:00 to 11:00. And then Hispanic Heritage Fiesta is downtown on the 28th. There's just so many things to do in Kalamazoo. That said, I want to thank our public safety officers, those who work on fire suppression, those who are emergency responders, those who work with the violence, and those who are now going to engage with the north side about the issues that are happening over there. Yes, a lot of things are happening in Kalamazoo, and yes, we do care, and that's why I do appreciate my colleagues up here. We all do care. And we are working collaboratively together with the tools that we have in the city, and sometimes the city doesn't have the tools. Sometimes it's a collaboration that has the tools. So I appreciate the work of the city, and I'm really grateful to our public safety officers who go to work every day to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other comments, Commissioners? Christopher Pradel?
Just echo, I appreciate north side residents who showed up here tonight. I, I just can't imagine, from a quality of life perspective, how challenging and hard that is, and just persistent. And I think the hard part, I think, is a shared frustration, I think, with public safety and the residents, is that you work really hard on a solution and hope it's going to work, and then you see, like you said, you see it fall back into the same old way. And, you know, I just, I hope that doesn't deter us from continuing to like, lean in, try to find opportunities to work together to try to solve these problems, because again, I, I cannot begin to convey how much I feel for the people who are up all night listening to that, can't sleep, new parents whose babies can't sleep at night, people who work, you know, unique shifts or have to be up early in the morning to go to work and can't sleep. I mean, that, that is, you know, in terms of what the city can do, you know, in terms of improving quality of life, it doesn't get any more fundamental than that. And so I appreciate Public Safety. They really have tried hard to have some innovative solutions this year with going around and identifying consistent license plates that are showing up, and then notifying people by letters, and then just flat-out towing people's vehicles if, if they're persistently participating in those. But I appreciate Chief's willingness to lean in and continue to meet and continue to show up, try to find some solutions for that. Also, I want to just take a personal moment to recognize my mom. Tonight, we recognize Big Brothers, Big Sisters, but my mom, who's worked there for almost 12 years, she's retiring before we have our next meeting for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So I want to congratulate my mom from, for a very long career of being somebody that's worked in services of serving people her whole career, and I'm very proud of her. So that's all.
That is very sweet. Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Anyone else? All right, a few comments myself. First of all, I, I do want to say thank you to the neighborhood residents that came in and asked for help. This is appropriate place to do that. You know, making sure that neighborhoods are safe and humane places to live for everyone is an extremely high value for the city of Kalamazoo. And it helps to have neighbors who are interested in seeking solutions together, and so that is so important. I do want to say that over many years, we have had really, in the last year, a great deal of success addressing this issue with some very innovative approaches that our public safety department came up with. And maybe people are finding workarounds on that now. I don't know, but thank you, Chief, for continuing to work, not being discouraged, and continue to find ways to help our residents, you know, live stable and positive lives. So thank you for all that. That all said, for all of us up here, I'm sure the way it is, is that when you, in essence, step forward and say you want to be in this place and, and be part of making decisions that everyone is not going to like all the time, but you do this because you care, this has been a very, very rough few days for all of us. Frightening and, and challenging. And, you know, I want to extend from the city. We've had some individuals, some who are visiting from out of town, who were randomly attacked and injured in our downtown in a very, very frightening way. And that is, it's crushing to, to experience that and feel the family responsibility, I think, that we feel that goes along with that. I appreciate the quick response from Public Safety. Thank you, literally. While, while most of us are getting an opportunity to, to finish our rest at 4:00 AM, folks are out, you know, apprehending somebody who has caused grievous, grievous harm to people in our community. On top of that, the next night, a person loses their life, and another person has gunshot wounds in an event that people are referencing at Florence and Westnatch. And once again, we're in a situation where one person loses their life, and think of the ripple effect of all that, on the immediate family, on the neighborhood, on our community at large. But even the people that were involved in the shooting, who have not been apprehended yet, but this is something that's going to be very, very challenging for you to live with, and there will be repercussions as well, which will also affect another whole set of families and relationships. But once again, it takes community. You know, our numbers are down this year, which I'm very happy about, but any numbers in that column are too high. And I want to say thank you, Public Safety, for the work you're doing, but all of us community, in every instance, do you have a, know a young person in your family that happens to have determined that it is better for them to carry a gun when they go out? You may have the opportunity to stop that if you are witnessing that at home. Please, I'm begging and asking you to participate in that way. I love you, Kalamazoo. We are adjourned.